Good evening, everybody. Welcome to Lewisville, Colorado City Council Meeting of Tuesday, August fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. We have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Lay. Councilmember Most.
Here.
Councilmember Dickinson.
Here.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Here.
Councilmember Hoffner.
Here.
Mayor Protem Fahey.
Here.
Mayor Maloney.
Here. Thank you. Everybody rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
One of the things that I'd like to just mention tonight and read something from the city council is really about our friends and neighbors in Maui. Dear friends in Hawaii, on the island of Maui in Lahaina, solidarity knows no distance. We want you to know the city of Lewisville, Colorado stands by your side during this devastating time. Our hearts ache alongside yours and as fellow survivors, we extend our hands in empathy and unity. Please know that you're not alone. Our thoughts, prayers, and heartfelt wishes are with you during this difficult journey. We have no words to fully express the magnitude of what you're going through, but we are here to offer assistance, experience, solidarity that may be of help. With deepest empathy and unwavering solidarity, the city of Lewisville. One other thing I want to note is the city manager and some of the key directors have reached out to Maui, and so we will keep doing that. They're still in the reaction mode, but when they start getting more to the recovery and rebuilding, I'm certain that they'll rely upon the things that we've gone here in Lewisville. So I want to thank the city manager who reached out, I think, last Tuesday, very early in this whole process. And yes, they are our neighbors. So with that, we will move on through the agenda. Next up is approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, next is public comments on items not on the agenda and items on the consent agenda. This is a chance for anyone to speak on any item not on the agenda or on the consent agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes. Please tell us your name and if you're a Lewisville resident. And first up is Eric Lund.
There we go. Honorable Mayor, city council members, and staff. My name is Eric Lund. I am the executive director of the Lewisville Chamber of Commerce located at nine oh one Main Street here in downtown Lewisville. In representing our chamber board of directors and our membership at large, we are pleased to have presented a couple of letters via email to council members regarding some key potential issues that may come before you. First, we support the city's efforts to establish a new concept plan review process. We think that could potentially reduce costs and improve the efficiency of future development for builders and developers in Lewisville. Second, we have provided you with three key areas of concern regarding the Future Dark Sky Initiative and ask you to carefully consider and review those concerns as they result they are as a result of our members' input, and we have conducted some surveys regarding that. Third, I have provided you with a letter from the Northwest Chamber Alliance, which consists of our chamber and five other chambers in our region and includes chambers that are impacted by the Boulder County Commissioner's new minimum wage proposals. The letter addresses some serious concerns about a possible minimum wage increase being pushed through far too quickly without the consultation and consideration of the chambers who represent the business communities in Boulder County. We are asking that if our city does consider a minimum wage increase in the future, independent of state or federal increases, that you would work with the Lewisville Chamber of Commerce for feedback and input from our business community. And again, we've conducted some pretty extensive surveys, so we've had a lot of input. I am asking for you to review the two letters that address all three of these important issues. Now, on the lighter side, we've got some great upcoming of community events that I would just like to invite you and our community members to attend. First, this coming Saturday, we have the Health and Home Expo presented by Vista Health Advent Hospital. That's their new name now. This event is at the Lewisville Senior and Recreation Center. It's going to be this Saturday from one to five P. M. We have more than twenty vendors, got quite a few, who will be providing valuable information about health and home improvement opportunities for our local community. And we have a lineup of informational seminars that will provide valuable information. Best of all, this event is free to the public. Second, we have our annual Pints in the Park event coming up. That's presented by Fox Properties Property Management on Labor Day weekend, Saturday the second, from four P. M. until eight P. M. So note that is a different time than past years. And this is where our community can enjoy live entertainment, taste locally crafted beers, vendors, and guests will enjoy a lot of food and fun as well. So more information about both events and other events that are coming up is available on our chamber website at lewisvillageamber.com. So I thank the council for allowing me the time to present today. We appreciate your ongoing service to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. I have another card here, John Cowley. Are you, did you sign up for the decarb? Is that what, that's when you want to talk? Okay, so I will note that. Does anybody else have any items that are not on agenda or consent agenda? All right, seeing none. We're going to move on to the consent agenda. Does anybody have changes to the consent agenda? Seeing none, does anybody have a motion?
Move to pass the consent agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next is council information and comments on pertinent items not on the agenda. Does anybody have anything?
How about impertinent items?
I don't have any impertinent items. All right, thank you. We'll move on to the city manager report.
No report, thank you.
Chris has an impertinent item.
Yes, Councilor Lay. Sorry, missed your hand.
It's okay. I am just for the record, I'm at home in day five of quarantine for COVID- nineteen. So I'm appearing here rather than getting you all sick there. But I just wanted you to know.
Thank you very much for not making us sick. Next, we move on to regular business. First up is Resolution Number forty-eight, Series two thousand and twenty-three, a resolution approving an internal decarbonization plan for the city of Lewisville organization. And I guess we're going to have a staff presentation.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council, and thank you for your time tonight. My name is Kayla Betsold, and I'm the Sustainability Manager with the city, and I'm honored to be joined here tonight by our team from McKinstry Engineering to provide you with the final internal decarbonization plan report, which includes key project findings, a three-phased implementation roadmap, an analysis of all of the project's components, financial considerations, and funding strategies. The internal decarbonization plan was originally included as a high priority two thousand and twenty-two city council work plan item and appears as a high priority item again on the two thousand and twenty-three council work plan, directing staff to complete the roadmap and begin implementation of the plan. The project supports the municipal goals outlined in the adopted sustainability action plan and supports the adopted municipal goals for carbon-free electricity and greenhouse gas emission reductions outlined in the adopted climate action goals. We're asking council tonight to consider adopting the internal decarbonization plan's final roadmap. If the plan is adopted, the roadmap will be used as a guiding document to assist staff with the implementation of the project and will be used to supplement future grant applications. This project was originally started back in June of two thousand and twenty-two with a staff team that got together and we spent, you know, a few meetings talking about our different department priorities. We constructed an RFP, went out for bid for this project. We interviewed a variety of different firms, and we contracted with McKinstry in November of two thousand and twenty-two. We asked the firm to provide a detailed analysis of all of our municipal facilities and associated fleet and equipment. The goal of the project was to create a strategic roadmap for electrification and decarbonization of all of our facilities, fleet, and equipment by two thousand and twenty-thirty. The analysis also evaluated our current renewable energy subscriptions and opportunities for more onsite renewables at our facilities. Throughout the project, the team is focused on creating a cost-effective, implementable action plan with buy-in across all of our city departments. On this slide, we provide you with more information about the process we've been conducting with McKinstry over the last ten months. Working closely with city manager's office, finance, facilities, fleet, water, and wastewater, the team completed walkthrough assessments of all ten of our city facility sites, conducted staff interviews to learn more about the goals and priorities of all of our city divisions, hosted technical workshops with relevant departments to ensure proper onsite solar design and equipment designs, and conducted financial workshops to review grants and funding strategies. We presented an update to you all in April of this year, and we received direction from the council to move forward with hybrid electrification in some instances. So this means that we leave natural gas backup systems, and those systems only turn on when it's very cold. We also received direction to extend the decarbonization goal from two thousand and thirty to two thousand and forty to ensure project cost effectiveness. Before we move on to project outcomes, I'd like to take a minute to review the overall purpose of this project and what it means to decarbonize our city. So by definition, decarbonization means removing the carbon or the carbon emitting equipment from our city facilities, fleet, and equipment. And when we think about the process of decarbonization, there's four main aspects. The first is evaluating the embodied carbon in our current building stock. So this means that by replacing equipment in our existing buildings, rather than tearing down buildings and rebuilding, we're reducing the carbon emissions involved with the construction process and the materials for the new buildings. Next, we always focus on energy efficiency. So by implementing some simple measures like window glazing, buildings controls, and insulation, we reduce our overall energy use, which also reduces our overall emissions and reduces the amount of renewable energy that we need to fully decarbonize. Next in the process is making our buildings, our fleet, and our equipment renewably power a bull. And what this means is that although we're currently offsetting our electricity with carbon-free sources through our subscriptions from Excel, until we remove natural gas burning equipment from our buildings, there is no clear path to fully decarbonize, and that's our buildings and our fleet. So when we transition our equipment from gas-powered to electricity-powered, we then have the capability for that piece of equipment or that vehicle to be powered by renewable energy. So removing gas is an essential piece of the decarbonization process. After that, we transition to a fully renewably powered building, fleet, and equipment stock through an increase of onsite renewables, cleaner grid-supplied electricity through Excel, and through our utility subscriptions. Now that I've outlined the purpose of the project and the overall idea of decarbonization, I'll turn it over to the McKinstry team to talk about the project outcomes and the specifics around the project, and then the team and I will both be here, available for questions afterwards. Thank you.
Thank you, Kayla, for the warm introduction. Good evening, Mayor and council. Great to be here with you again. I was back here, I was here back in April when we gave you the first update, as Kayla mentioned, so we're excited to discuss our findings with you and let you know what we've been up to and what it could mean for the city's decarbonization journey. So starting off with some key findings, so the first two are ones that Kayla already touched on, and that would be extending the timeline from two thousand and thirty to two thousand and forty. And that also has a big benefit towards embodied carbon as well. Kayla mentioned the fact that we're not tearing down buildings. We're also not removing mechanical equipment before it's ready to be removed, before it's failed. So that was a big driver behind pushing that back. In addition, hybrid electrification leads to cost effectiveness, and this really coalesces into a total net cost of decarbonization of four to fourteen million dollars. And my colleague Ashley will explain all that. We also found that self-owned solar, so solar owned by the city onsite is actually cheaper than electricity purchased through the utility, as well as efficiency and load reduction, and I will touch more on that in a minute. And then we've also broken the plan up into three phases, which I'll touch on. The first phase has the potential to reduce carbon by thirty-five percent, and a large portion of the electricity could come from onsite renewables instead of through the grid. And lastly, this would certainly establish the city as a leader in the climate space and progress that notion of you as a leader. So before I get into what we found, I wanted to start with where we're at and where the city is at. So on the left here on this pie chart, you can see that roughly ninety percent of the city's energy is used by buildings. The rest is used by fleet and miscellaneous equipment, and by miscellaneous equipment we mean lawn mowers, weed whackers, that kind of thing. So I'll talk about all three of those unique system types in a minute. But before we do that, also wanted to touch on the buildings, since they're such a big piece of the energy. You can see on the right, the rec center, the rec and senior center, by far is the largest carbon emitter, and we talked about this when I was here last time. That's largely because not only is it the biggest building by far, but it is also inherently just a high-energy building, rec centers are. So we did focus on that building, but also we took all this into account when we were figuring out how to lay out the roadmap for the city. Talking a little bit more about the fleet specifically, so there are five categories of fleet vehicle in the city. The first two are light duty and light duty high performance and make up about sixty percent of the number of vehicles, as well as the emissions. And light duty is a common sedan, minivan, light duty truck. Light duty high performance is a similar vehicle but rated for police use. So there's those two categories are the big ones, and then heavy duty is another big category, which consists mostly of large pickup trucks. And then the last two categories are smaller. They are large heavy duty and non-road, and large heavy duty would be things like snowplows, and then non-road are construction vehicles. And as you can see, the last two categories aren't quite ready technologically for electrification. We expect they will be in the near future, but that's something that we took into account when we were mapping out not just the buildings, but also how the fleet is going to be electrified and decarbonized. So here is the result. I believe when I was here last, Councilor Hamilton asked for a graphic exactly like this, so as promised, here it is. So we, this is, forms the basis of the plan. We broke it up into two unique types, so we have electricity on the left and fossil fuel on the right. And you can see in each graph on the left is your current emissions, and then as you progress through time, you see how those emissions step down based on the measures that are implemented. So we broke this into three different phases, and we chose the phases intentionally for a few different reasons. First of all, we wanted to size them such that there are efficiencies with implementing them. If you are making them a lot smaller and then breaking them up into a bunch of different phases, there's a lot of startup, you know, kind of ramp up and ramp down costs and time that go into that. So we wanted to make sure that they were big enough to gain those efficiencies, but not so big that they weren't implementable. So we tried to find the sweet spot between those two. And the buildings, the buildings, the fleet, and the miscellaneous equipment, but especially the buildings, are phased so that they're timed with the end of useful life for a lot of our mechanical equipment. So any of the green bars is very intentionally set because that's when we expect that equipment to need to be replaced. And as far as we had the budget, we took the information from the budget. So if it told us that the rec center already has money allocated for this replacement, then we incorporated that into our timeline, and same with some of the other buildings, which already have replacements slated. So we made sure to time that intentionally with when the units are going to need to be replaced anyways. Two, or one other thing about Phase One is the, you'll see we put all the renewables in Phase One, as well as all of the load reduction and energy efficiency measures. For renewables, that was specifically because the funding, particularly at the federal level with the Inflation Reduction Act, is very good right now. Now is the time to implement and take advantage of those funds while we still can. So that was on the renewables side, and that's in addition to other state and local incentives, but the federal one in particular. And then on the efficiency and load reduction side, those are the more low-cost, tried-and-true, good payback measures that we see implemented all the time. So we figured those are the measures we should be implementing right now to start realizing those carbon savings and those utility savings. One last thing to discuss is the cost. So under each bar, you'll see two numbers. The gray one represents the total construction costs, and by that we mean the full, complete cost of implementing this to the city. So that includes construction, soft costs, design, labor permitting, contingencies. It's all that stuff bundled in, so we wanted to give you the most realistic number for what you would expect when you go to implement these. And then the net construction cost is the, the equation is the total construction cost minus the business-as-usual cost. And by business-as-usual, we mean these are the costs that the city would incur regardless of decarbonization. Every system we evaluated is going to fail at some point, whether or not we decarbonize it. So there's going to be a cost associated with replacing that unit or that car or whatever it is. And so we developed those costs. So the net construction cost is the, essentially the full cost of decarbonization minus the cost you would already spend. So the net construction cost is really the cost delta for decarbonization. So if you want to know, how much does it cost to decarbonize? It is, over what we would already be paying, it is the net construction cost. So we tried to outline that to make that understandable. So we have a lot of recommendations in here and wanted to, wanted to let you know what was driving those recommendations. There were six key items. The first was goals. Does the solution drive towards the decarbonization goals of the city? Does the technology exist, is the second one. Is it financially feasible and cost-effective, was the third one. We evaluated lifecycle carbon emissions, particularly for hybrid electrification. I wanted to know what the impact was on that. We evaluated what the impact to operations and maintenance would be, and we also looked at co-benefits. So by co-benefits, we mean, in addition to the obvious benefit of reducing or removing carbon emissions, are there other benefits of this, of making these changes? For example, can we improve indoor air quality? City Hall, we know, has some thermal comfort issues, so can we resolve those thermal comfort issues while decarbonizing? So we wanted to include that as well. So another reason that we feel renewables and energy efficiency are the best to implement now is because financially, they make a lot, they make sense in terms of how much does it cost to acquire zero-carbon electricity. So over the lifespan of many and most of the efficiency and load reduction measures, the cost of implementing that measure is, and the savings you realize from it, ends up being cheaper than buying that electricity from the grid. Similarly with renewables, so especially because of the IRA, the Inflation Reduction Act, we see renewables from, over its lifespan, actually coming in cheaper than utilities producing carbon-free electricity from the utility. So again, not only is there a decarbonization benefit, there's actually a financial benefit for both of those as well. And then for all the remaining carbon, all the remaining electricity with carbon, we are offsetting that with the typical utility subscription programs you're already enrolled in. So that's what the Excel Wind source is. So what does that mean for renewables? We implement, or we evaluated, we evaluated all ten sites. We're recommending arrays, solar photovoltaic or PV arrays at eight sites. We have indicated three priority sites, so we recommend all eight, but these are the three that we think are the most ready to be implemented now. So they're at the wastewater treatment plant, the rec center, and city services. And by most ready to be implemented, we mean they are scalable, they're cost-effective, and the site that we chose for them is ready for implementation now, whereas some other sites, some of their, some of their futures are unknown, given potential building expansions or something like that. So they're a little, so we put those in lower priority because they're a little, a little more unknown, but these three priority sites were pretty good targets. There's a lot of KW numbers up there, so for reference, right now the city has three hundred KW of owned solar, which is point three megawatts, and with just the three highest priority arrays, you would increase that by an additional one point four megawatts. So that would do, that would take you a long way towards your decarbonization journey. We also included EV charging, because we are electrifying the fleet, and beyond the fleet, we want to provide EV chargers for the public as they electrify their vehicles as well. So we have, we've indicated how many charging spots that will be public-facing versus city-facing. You can see in the bottom right, there's a big bubble there. That's where city services building is, since most of the fleet lives there. Once it is electrified, we're going to need a lot of chargers there. And so all that is taken into account, and the electrical impacts of that are all taken into account when it comes to the, the technical and the financial analysis. And then lastly for me is miscellaneous equipment. So like I said, that encompasses lawn mowers and leaf blowers and that kind of thing, all the equipment that's used by parks and rec and open spaces and the golf course. Some of that equipment has already been electrified or is, or has a hybrid electrified option, so we accounted for that. You can see that lawn mowers by far emit the most emissions, so that'll be a big target for the city moving forward. The idea here is that, you know, these are built into the roadmap such that when they fail, here's what it costs to replace it with the new electric option. And if, if in the event there's not a commercially readily, a commercially available technology today, then we'll kick that, you know, we can still replace it with an internal combustion engine today and then wait until the commercially ready product is available. So this all went into the roadmap as well. With that, I will pass it over to Ashley.
Thanks, Brian. Hi, council and mayor. I'll be covering some of the funding, implementation, and co-benefits of the project. So as you can see on this slide, we've actually done an extensive analysis in addition to the technical component of this roadmap, looking into different grant opportunities to offset the initial costs of the project. What we found, we've done several interviews at the state level and with staff and the finance team to look into some of these. There are an extensive number of grants. There's an unprecedented amount of free money available for all components of the project. So for fleet, EV charging, renewables, and building electrification, a lot of these grants are looking for shovel-ready projects, which you all have with this roadmap, and are looking for holistic projects that really move the needle at a city level. So staff has already done a really good job applying or looking into all of the grants that have an asterix, so those are ones that are already in progress as a grant application or will be applied for as soon as they for as soon as they come out. And we encourage you to continue looking into this. I think part of our plan is really looking at every five to seven years refreshing, but there are more and more grants coming out almost monthly at this point at both the state and federal level. And so tracking these will be really key for offsetting some of those initial costs of the plan. We also partnered with an economics firm called AutoCase to look at some of the additional avoided costs and co-benefits that the city would be realizing in addition to some of the financial benefits. We did quantify these, but they're not actually included in the financial analysis. So we looked at, you know, what are some of the avoided costs that the city would be realizing as you go through the implementation process with decarbonization? So just avoiding future carbon emissions penalties. So we've already seen this a little bit at the state level where we have the Building Performance Ordinance now rolling out. And Denver has also implemented and adopted the Energized Denver Climate Tax. And so we think that in the next decade or two, that there will be climate tax at both the state and federal level. And by starting this process early, you'll stay ahead of the curve and avoid some of those future carbon emissions penalties. In addition, we also anticipate in the next decade or two, there will be another future natural gas price shock like we saw last year where gas prices rose about 50% after some of the different volatility that happened across the globe. And then you'll also be future facility ready for future micro grids. So especially at the rec center, which could potentially be a community resiliency hub in the future, that facility will be ready once battery packs progress from a technological standpoint, be ready to potentially shift some of those energy costs and save you money in the future. Then looking at some of the co-benefits, like Brian mentioned before, with improved HVAC systems and also some of the weather stripping and air sealing, you'll see improved employee and visitor health and performance. You'll prevent some of that wildfire smoke from coming into the buildings with better air sealing and better, newer and improved HVAC systems will also help with filtration of the air that's coming in from outdoors. And then we've also seen a correlation of climate leadership and better facilities leading to better employee retention, which also can have a financial benefit over the long run. So the total value of these co-benefits that we've calculated with our economics partners, about 10.7 million. Again, this isn't included in the financial analysis. These are just additional benefits that the city potentially will realize over the next few years through 2040. And then some unquantified co-benefits are just improving decarbonization, education, inspiration throughout the community. So for your residential and commercial partners in the city of Lewisville, being a leader and maintaining that in climate and really showing the Lewisville brand within the climate community, and then local job creation and economic development through decarbonization So this is a financial summary of the net costs of decarbonization that Brian went through briefly before. So we define the net cost as the total construction cost to decarbonize minus the like-for-like cost that the city would already be spending anyway in a business-as-usual scenario with fleet and equipment replacements. And then taking into account the project savings and grants that the city could secure through decarbonization. So going down from, starting at the top of the table, the gross decarbonization costs are roughly 51 million. You would already be spending about 27 million of that if you weren't decarbonizing just on fleet and equipment alone. The total savings compared to the business-as-usual scenario would be about 7 million through 2040. Those would be additional savings beyond 2040, but for the purpose of this analysis, we just went through 2040. The total grants and stimulus, the minimum amount you would secure through just the Inflation Reduction Act and some of the current grant applications that we know you'll secure is about 3 million. And on the high end, which is a little bit more conservative actually, and is just based on what we know today and not what we know in the future, would be about 13 million. So the net cost of decarbonization, which varies based on those grant awards, would be about four to 14 million. And those are all turnkey, like turnkey costs that include design, engineering, construction and commissioning, and do not include the value of any co-benefits or avoided costs that the city would be realizing. So finally, we wanted to highlight some of the implementation strategies that we came to, for the city to consider. So the first one is energy performance contracting. This is a state-backed program run by the Colorado Energy Office. It's been around for several decades. They provide free third-party support, and there have been over 210 decarbonization projects that have gone through this program in the state of Colorado alone. This allows for a lot of flexibility. If you want to do sub-phases within phase one, we know this is a big cost for the city and a big consideration. So this allows for a lot of flexibility. You can bring several different financing and funding tools to the table under this mechanism. It allows for better success in grants. And we recommend using this for the phase one renewables, load reduction and mechanical replacements, and then in phases two and three for the more complex mechanical retrofits, and then EV charging as it aligns with those larger phases. The second implementation strategy that's recommended is design build or design bid build. And so we recommend this for smaller and less complex mechanical systems. This is kind of a typical approach that the city is already using for some of the smaller rooftop unit replacements, and we would recommend this for some of those just less complex mechanical upgrades. And then finally, self-implementation for EV charging, fleet purchases and the miscellaneous equipment. The city is already doing a really good job electrifying and adding EV charging to the city. This route and method has worked so far, and we would recommend continuing to do that on an annual basis as grants are available to maximize the grant and total offset cost. So with that, we wanted to thank you all for allowing us for this presentation and really thank staff for all of the hard work they've put into this roadmapping process for the last year.
Thank you very much. Well, I want to compliment all the presenters. No, please, no, no noise. Everybody has an opinion. Everybody gets to voice their thoughts, and so let's, let's be civil. I want to thank all the presenters. I think this is an excellent report. It's something that, there's so much in it that I think that we're going to have a lot of discussion. But, you know, I also want to note that some of the things we talked about, you know, lifecycle and equipment, and some of those things became principles in this, what I think were really, really important. So I think that council, and I think the citizens who are all going to, a lot of them are going to voice their opinion here in a minute, think this is very important. So we're going to go to public comment at this point in time. We will have two opportunities for council, or at least one opportunity for council to discuss this, and I'm sure we'll have a lot of questions. So I want to do public comment first. And first up is John Cowley.
Hello, I'm John Cowley, 303 Fairfield Lane. Thanks for giving me a chance to speak. I wrote down my words because I've only got three minutes and I better work fast. This study, we all agree, I think, is, appears to be very thorough and insightful for reducing Lewisville's municipal carbon footprint. It's a very professional plan. However, regarding the resolution itself, Resolution 48, for those who've read it, I want to bring up two important points that I think city council should seriously consider before approving this resolution. My first concern is that it's very disappointing that the authors of Resolution 48 felt the need to include a glaring escape clause, that this plan is a strategic roadmap, but shall not bind the city to any particular course of action, implementation benchmarks or timeline. The reason that concerns me is, over the last year, I've been looking into the city's 2016 and 2020 sustainability action plans and the 2017 energy action plan. Again, my reaction was disappointment. In those, there was no serious commitment to implement those actionable plans. As a result, those plans led to no significant reduction in our citywide carbon footprint. In fact, since that first action plan, the commercial sector use of natural gas has gone up 27%. That's over 5% a year. Do we want this resolution's escape clause to allow repeating that lack of follow-through? Based on this history, I suggest that section two be rewritten with something like this. The city hereby sets a goal to complete implementation by 2028 of at least the high priority objectives of the plan, bearing unforeseen challenges that may intervene. And remember, after 100 years of buildup, reversing climate change in Lewisville won't be free. The city will need to find the financing and additional manpower as necessary to deliver on this commitment. My second concern is that there could be erosion in the effectiveness of the plan. The background packet shows phase three continuing through 2040. This stretches the schedule out over 16 years. You won't be here, and I may not be on the planet. That would reduce the pace of citywide carbon reduction to about 1/10th percent per year of the citywide carbon footprint averaged over time. Compare that with 5% growth in the natural gas use per year. I recommend that city council delay its approval of Resolution 48 and rewrite section two to bravely commit to completing by 2028 at least the plan's high priority projects. If Greta Thunberg were here tonight, she might say something like, "The global climate crisis doesn't have an escape clause." Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Tess, and I'm sorry, I can't read your last name. Well, welcome.
Okay, I'm Tess Waltzine. My address, right? 286-
Just if you're a Lewisville resident.
Okay, so I'm not. Okay, anyways, hi, city council members. I'm here today, of course, in regards to McKinstry's engineering plans for decarbonizing Lewisville's buildings and operations. I commend city council for taking steps in the right direction by planning this decarbonization and recognizing the dire need to divest from fossil fuels. Already, we are making necessary change. These past few months, I have thought a lot about climate change. By starting my search for colleges, I'm already having to plan my future. And while that's usually a really exciting milestone, I can't help but feel hopeless. I'm planning for a future that I might not have. On July 22nd, 2023, the climate clock ticked down below six years for the first time, meaning we now have less than six years to dramatically reduce fossil fuel emission to stay below 1.5 degrees Celsius warming. That's 2,168 days. 2,168 days to be creating systematic, driven and innovative change. By supporting this municipal decarbonization, Lewisville is taking a step in the right direction. I get that we have the whole world's change to fight this climate crisis, but every single step we take as a small town ensures cleaner air, cleaner water and a cleaner future for our residents. Every step taken tells me that you, city council members, care about my generation. You are fighting for my future. Our community continues to be supportive of bold, sustainable practices and policies. Your work as council has recognized the wishes of your constituents, and I hope that this continues. Our community is grateful for our city leadership for approving capital improvement projects that help us reach our goals. Lewisville is working side by side with state and county stakeholders to systematically work to achieve net zero carbon emissions. Embedding this internal decarbonization into the new comprehensive plan will support this vital work that impacts everyone in our community. And thank you because supporting this plan tells me that you are fighting for my future. You are fighting for Lewisville's future. Thank you. I appreciate you for serving our community.
Thank you. Next up, we have Shira Nathan.
Hi, my name is Shira Nathan, and I'm a senior at Centauras High School, and I am not a Lewisville resident. I'm here tonight also to speak in favor of the proposed municipal decarbonization plan. Similar to Tess, as a young person, I worry frequently about my future will be like on a dying planet. Just this week, historic wildfires swept through Maui, destroying countless livelihoods. Venice is sinking. The seven hottest days in recorded history all occurred this July. And those are all just the extreme events I can think of off the top of my head. Open any news app, and you will see many, many more all across the globe. The climate crisis is here, and it is affecting people right now, including Lewisville residents. To put it plainly, we have absolutely no time to waste. With this plan, I believe Lewisville can be part of the global effort to mitigate climate change. Decarbonization is absolutely key to combating the climate crisis. Converting to clean energy is the most high-reward action the city can partake in. It is through comprehensive, system-level changes such as this that we will be able to survive as a species. If you vote to pass this plan, you are showing a commitment to environmental well-being and human health. While there are many other projects that the city could be focusing on, none of them compare in impact or importance to the decarbonization of the city. Furthermore, the cost will be far greater if we fail to act now, both economically and environmentally. The stakes are high, and the fate of my future and that of my generation hangs in the balance. I encourage you to keep that in mind when making your decision tonight and consider what a positive vote would signal to the youth of Lewisville. We're counting on you to represent us and make decisions that will allow us a sustainable future. I thank you for your time, and I hope you pass the plan.
Thank you very much. Next up is Katie Doyle Myers.
Hello, and thanks to all of you. I'm Katie Doyle Myers, a resident at 425 Grousk Court. Thanks to Kayla and the McKinstry team and to all of the council for getting us to this point. It's historic in itself to prioritize and make this investment that you've made to learn, to analyze and to plan for the city's internal decarbonization. We all know the science that eliminating carbon emissions is the way to limit the harmful effects of climate change. And we know that the decarbonization of buildings is a crucial first step. I know there's more to the plan, but talking about the big piece of the rec center in particular and the library and the police station. I congratulate you all and the city of Lewisville staff for taking the steps needed to investigate and create this plan. The next step to approve it is in your hands, and I urge you to do so this evening. As a 19-year resident of the city of Lewisville, I can imagine the sense of pride that I and my family will have as we witness the transition of the buildings and the other arenas that we would transition during this plan. This approval of the plan is a message to our community and to our children. We prioritize your future. We commit to creating a healthy and sustainable community for all. I love that this also has the opportunity to highlight that community education and inspiration co-benefit that was recognized here in the presentation today. I also love that approving this plan could set up the city of Lewisville as a leader, as continue to be a leader in the climate space, not just here in Boulder County, but through our state, country and even globally. Thank you so much for your time, and I just appreciate all of your service. I know it's monumental. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next up, we have Josh Cooperman.
Hi, I'm Josh Cooperman. I live in Lewisville. First, I'd like to thank city council for prioritizing this planning effort and for setting an initial goal of decarbonizing municipal buildings and operations by 2030. I don't think I need to explain the importance and urgency of decarbonization. The previous few speakers have done a very good job of doing that. I feel like McKinstry and Kayla have done a great job with this report, and I would ask that you definitely adopt the plan. Then I think you need to pivot with urgency to implementing the plan. And I would just echo what John Cowley said about its implementation. I think he's right on. So I'd like to pivot to a few other ideas. I think it's important not simply to decarbonize municipal buildings and operations, but by doing that, we will set an example, not only for our own community, but for other communities. And setting that example is extremely important because municipal buildings and operations, their carbon emissions only represent a few percent of the total carbon footprint of Lewisville, and we need to decarbonize our entire community on a similar timeline. What's more, implementing this municipal decarbonization plan is not enough, not simply for the community, but for the city. The city needs to also consider ways to sequester carbon on its lands, and it needs to implement climate change adaptation measures. We have already emitted so much carbon dioxide that we're guaranteed a certain amount more of global warming, and we need to adapt the city to that. and we need to adapt the city to that global warming, for instance, by reducing heat island effects. I think there are a lot of ways, and I've advocated for some of them before, that the city could do that. And I think we should get right on it, just like we should get right on implementing this decarbonization plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the chamber who'd like to speak? Sherry?
Thank you, Sherry Summer, Lewisville. I think this plan is really wonderful. It's very well thought out. And what I really like about it is that it's a reach for our town, but it's not so much of a reach that we can't implement it. I like the idea of being a leader among peers, but what I really like is that we are being the best that we can be within our means. I'd like to ask some questions and point out some things about the co-benefits. I was happy to see the miscellaneous equipment upgrades, because I think that'll also support our DEI goals, that employees who work with gas-powered equipment will be exposed to less noise and emissions. And I think that's really something that I value. I wanted to ask about the avoided cost of improvements, like they mentioned in this building. Are those improvements that wouldn't already be done? Or they wouldn't be done, or would they be done? Because I guess if those improvements would be done, some of that $10.6 million should be subtracted from the total cost of this project. It would actually, it would be lower. I also wonder if the payback period, I wonder what the payback period is, and I consider that that would be a co-benefit. As we go out past 2040, we'll be saving money. And so I think that should be also considered a co-benefit. I want to ask about the grants and the stimulus money. The range is pretty big, I think, $3 to $13 million. And I mentioned that the $3 million is a low, is conservative. So I'd like to know what is most likely within this range, the grants, and if... It seemed like the energy performance contracting was optional, but I would like to know if we certainly would take that route, which seems to make a lot of sense, how many more grants would automatically be, we would actually be getting automatically. My final point, and all this random stuff that I'm talking about, is the financing. I didn't see anything in the packet about how much the financing would cost and the different options. And I just wonder how current interest rates would affect the cost of financing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the chambers? All right, we do have one person on Zoom, Tiffany Boyd.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, Tiffany Boyd, 550 Grant Avenue. Thank you so much for your service, City Council. This is a really intense time for you to be serving our community. There's so much happening around us with climate change, and you have been continually on the forefront of being proactive and helping our community to be climate resilient. And especially in the wake of the Marshall Fire, we are realizing what does climate adaptation really mean? So thank you so much for your service. This is a difficult time to serve, and we appreciate your time and your attention to these things that affect all of us. I think one of the things that's so exciting about this plan is the onsite renewables, both at the water treatment plant and the rec center and other places in the community, because like we were, like the plan states, there's a lot of current city money being put towards recs. And having our own renewable energy onsite is vital for our climate resilience and also for just being able to cut back on our dependence on Excel's grid. As we go forward, we can't continue to depend on them. We need to start localizing some of our municipal energy use, and I think this plan really spells that out nicely. The other thing that's really great that was mentioned in the McKinstry report is just the acknowledgement of the possible future site of the rec center being a place of climate resilience and climate refuge. If we come to a point where the Excel grid is not operational and community members need a place to go, it also sets us up for that kind of climate resilience. I feel like nothing is off the table right now with climate change, and that this plan is very forward-thinking. And by you approving it tonight, you're making a commitment, a commitment to this long haul of investment and this long haul of just awareness and recognition of what's happening around us. The thing that's also exciting right now with the Inflation Reduction Act is there are so many grants and so many match funding grants. And as we know, we have to invest money to be able to have those matching funds. And you tonight passing this shows that commitment to this ongoing plan, so thank you so much.
Thank you. Seeing no more hands up, we'll come to City Council. Counselor Dickinson, did you raise your hand?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to start by thanking everybody that's a part of this. Obviously, hopefully, most good things come from the public and the interest of our residents in doing something, and council's job is to respond to that. We have our own opinions, of course, about things, but a big part of us is representing. So I actually mean this sincerely when I say I've been trying for four years to do something that would make Tess Waltzine proud of me. Like, seriously. And I want to appreciate not just this council, but the council before ours, or this current one, for giving the direction to move in this direction, right? Like, that this is the policy that we have asked you guys to work on. And so then I want to thank staff, and especially Kayla, but all the staff for the amount of work that you guys have all put into it. And of course, Ashley and Brian as well, and all of you there. Amazing work, amazing product. And again, this is one of those things where now it comes back to council, and the question is, are we ready to act? So we asked for policy, or we made policy direction, right? Then you bring us something back that's going to be expensive and difficult and hard at times. And the question is, do we want to act on that, or how forcefully do we want to act on it? So, you know, it's back in our court right now. And what I'd like to say is that one of the other things that makes me really happy about this moment is we've done a lot of asking of others, whether it's residents or businesses, with our new codes and other things, like, "This is what you have to do." And I think that's appropriate, and I'm glad we've done that. But I think we were missing a little bit of, you know, leading by example, and this is what we're going to do. And we've been doing a lot. I don't want to mislead there. We've been doing a lot of things in the last several years, but this is a really good opportunity for us to say, "We know how expensive it is. We know how difficult it is, and we're in. And we're going to spend our collective money on something that's this important to the world and our community." So I'm glad that we are leading by example there. And then we can then turn back around to the residents and businesses, because a very good point is made that we're not that big. We're very big. The city of Lewisville, our government, is a very big polluter, if you will. But all those commercial buildings and all those residential buildings that aren't under a new building code, that need retrofitting, that is not internal decarbonization, right? That is citywide decarbonization, which is another millions of dollars of incentives, in my opinion, to kind of help push that along, which it's okay that it's not part of this. This is our step of leading, but I hope that we see more of that in the future as well. I don't have many more comments. I have one about the ending the $7 million slash, this is kind of for you, the $7 million benefit in cost savings over time. Like, yeah, well, we ended at 2040. It's one of my biggest annoyances, right, is that like, well, but that extends for so long. And the expenses, this creating this, those expenses kind of stop. And so to stop looking at our benefits at the end of the implementation, for me, is like, well, no, no, that's... This is when it starts getting really good, because we're not spending more, and we're continuing to get that benefit. So I was curious if you just know, like, roughly what the annual benefit is in cost savings as of like 2040? Like, what would we be kind of saving year after year after year after that point?
Yes, I think Kayla might have some of this, but it's between $2,000 and $300,000. And I believe in your council packet, there's kind of a graph. Because this does take into account, actually, the energy penalties. And so it's looking at penalties plus...
Or lack of penalties?
Sorry, so electrification penalties. So as you put more electrification online, you'll actually take a little bit of a hit from an energy cost perspective from demand. So it starts at a little over $300,000 in savings with Phase One, and it actually dips a little bit to between $2,000 and $300,000 annually in savings. The scope of this project was to go through 2040, so that's why we had to kind of create some sort of boundary around the financial parameters. But you would still be seeing probably over $200,000 in annual savings just from those utility and O and M costs alone moving forward after 2040.
Okay, and then the other just technical question I had is, when we get pretty far in the future, let's say 2035, is it possible that there is no Delta? And I'm just curious how your model worked in, like, is there no Delta anymore? Because there's only one thing you can buy at that point. In 2035, you will not be able to buy something different. So there's no implementation of buying the right kind of furnace or the right kind of AC unit, because it's the only thing available. So there is no Delta anymore if you get far enough out? Is that realized, or is it kind of always? There's always going to be some Delta, no matter what, in the future. Does that question make sense? I just want to...
Yes. I think the business-as-usual scenario just assumes some sort of cost in Phase Three. I think a lot of the biggest deltas, obviously, Phase One and Phase Two, when a lot of the mechanical upgrades will be done. Brian, I don't know if you want to speak to this a little bit?
Yeah, I would say that what you are asking is likely. It is likely that there will be no Delta, but it's also impossible for us to predict, unfortunately. So we assumed essentially, like Ashley just said, we would still have gas as a baseline, and then we have our current technology down the line. So I think that it would, which means that this is kind of a conservative estimate, because we know technology will get better and it'll get cheaper. We can look just at, if you look at new construction buildings, a few years ago, it was pretty cost prohibitive for electrification. And now, there's a lot of codes requiring it, and the costs are coming way down. So you can use that as kind of just an example of the costs will come down and the technology will improve. But we have not accounted for that, because it's hard to predict.
Yeah, no, that, it was just, it was daunting me that this like, how do you... Because that's a big part of it, right, is like, if you, furnace might cost $10,000, but you have to buy another one for eight anyway. The other question, which I might be too complicated to... Are there any moments, or are there any major pieces in your evaluation where you see some pretty intense, like, diminishing returns? You know, where you can get, for instance, like a 97 efficiency to go to a 98 efficiency, but it's twice as much? And that, you get to a point of diminishing return, where we want to do the best, but are there moments in which there are cost reductions of getting really, really close? But, you know, I think you get the question. Are there opportunities for saving some money by not going all the way every time?
Yeah, I think that was really the driving force behind hybrid electrification, because it really is diminishing returns in terms of the money you're spending for the carbon you're reducing. So that was the big one. And then I think, I think in general, you know, technology will evolve with... I think a big one that will help is heat pumps, which are kind of our driving electrified system right now. The technology will greatly improve, and so we'll even start to see that hybrid window shrink as heat pumps are able to operate at lower temperatures. We will, hopefully, in theory, you know, we won't need gas eventually at all. And it'll be, we'll have a fully electrified system without that huge cost delta that we currently have.
Okay, thank you. I think those are all my questions. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Counselor Moes?
I'll just add quickly. On page 31 of this item's council packet is more information about the hybrid electrification and the cost savings associated with it.
Thank you for that clarification. Counselor Moes?
Thank you. I want to reiterate the comments about the quality of this material. And I just want to thank Kayla. I think she's done an unbelievable job and brought an incredible level of expertise to this community that is just amazing. And I think, you know, I just want to just call you out, because I think it is, I just think it's great, and I think this is so needed, and I think this is something that's really important to our community. And having you spearheading this and being our point person is fantastic. Brian and Ashley, great, really, really great work, quality work. It's so nice to be able to look at this material, and it's presented in such a clear way, and it's really the information we need. Yes, it's dense. There's a lot in here, but I just think it's fantastic, and I really appreciate that. I have some comments and some questions, and they may go back and forth. One of the things that I was really happy that you brought out was the sort of extra benefits of doing this work. And one of them is hopefully spreading information to the community. And I just want to, I've talked about this before, and I just want to reiterate it again to our city manager and to our sustainability manager, that I'm hoping that the learnings that we get from this process can be translated into information that we can make available to our community so people who want to proactively take steps like this can understand how they can do that. I think that would be fantastic. So, you know, if we could just create a guide online, even if it's sending people to different resources where they can get information or where there's funding available to do upgrades. Because I think, as Josh Cooperman mentioned, this is great that we're doing this, but the bulk of carbon from our community is on our residences and commercial buildings, and we really need to find ways to assist and incentivize our residents and businesses to adopt these practices. I was also really, really happy to hear that owning our own solar is more efficient and cost-effective than getting it from Excel. I know that's going to make my colleague from Ward II, Mayor Pro Tem Deb Fahy, very happy to hear. I think that's great, and I'm glad that we're getting to that point. And I'm also glad that you guys are talking about exploiting everything we can from the IRA. One question I did have, and I don't know if anyone in the room has an answer to this, is do we have any idea of the timeframe for when we hope to see heavy-duty electric vehicles, where we can start to think about, you know, can snowplows? Can, you know, some of these bigger pieces of equipment that we rely on? Do we have a sense of the timeframe on when we might see those commercially available?
I do not know exactly. I can think of other similar vehicles. If you look at semi-trucks are starting to be electrified. One thing to keep in mind with snowplows is that those are needed in emergency times when, and you need a large EV or battery system to charge them. So that's another kind of technological hurdle in addition to the snowplow itself. So...
It may be five or 10 years before we're really even...
Yeah, probably, yeah. I mean, I think, I think technology, especially in the EV market, is changing rapidly. And actually, to go back to what you asked about Caleb, the fact that, you know, California is going to ban internal combustion engines soon. A lot of the automakers are starting, are saying, "We're not going to produce internal combustion engines past 2030 or 2035 or something." It's those types of things that will lead to what you were asking about with, will there be no Delta eventually? So hopefully, that carries over to those...
So we should see some market acceleration due to some of these factors. So hopefully, that's going to make a difference. Great. Okay, great. Another question I had was around the EV charging center we're going to have to create where our service center is, where all our electric vehicles will be. Are there upgrade issues with, you know, getting enough power to that location or creating the power generation we need with solar? You know, how do you see that working, and, you know, what does that evolution look like?
Yeah, so we accounted for, there's a few different things in there. We will need to upgrade the electrical service to the building. The site is sized to handle a certain electrical load. This would exceed that. So we accounted for that. So that's, once the power gets to the site, it'll be good. As far as the power getting to the site... As far as the power getting to the site, well, first of all, renewables will help out with that, providing onsite power, of course. And then to get it to the site when it goes into Excel's purview. I can't speak for them directly. I can speak to what I know they and a lot of other utilities are saying, which is that they will be ready for this for electrification. It remains to be seen, but I think we have done all we can to plan for it. And I think especially by having plans like this, when you tell the utility, hey, we're going to add this many EV chargers and we're going to add this much load just at the city level, here's what our residents might also be doing. It helps them understand that. And when they go back to develop their biannual plans, they take that in consideration and say, okay, we really need to start building up this capacity.
Great. And then I just have one more question specifically about the rec, rec center. And the reason I'm interested is in this is because when the rec center was built, the community was promised this was going to be this incredibly energy efficient building. So I'm trying to understand, is it, understandably, the rec center is a large building. There's tons of people, there's electricity, there's water demands, there's all of these things. But just in terms, you know, is the reason that we're looking at the rec center in terms of being really the biggest opportunity for making a dent in our carbon footprint? Is, does that have to do with just the age of the building or specific energy issues? Like one of the things that always kind of makes me crazy because I'm a regular user of the rec center is that the air conditioning is running upstairs when it's 50 degrees outside because of those western windows. And I, the reason I'm bringing this up honestly is because I raised this issue when they built that building. And they told me up and down it wasn't going to be a problem. And, you know, I, I look at that and I'm like, yeah, that's kind of an issue. So I'm just wondering if it's, is it the design of that building? Is it the age of the building? Is it, you know, what are the factors that are, that are contributing to that?
Yeah, that is a great question. There's a couple of questions in there. So for the first one, it's the fact that that building uses so much energy is not because of the age or the efficiency. I have no doubt that it was designed to be very efficient. It's just the fact that it takes a lot of energy to heat a pool indoors and then cool the space that holds that pool, basically. There's a lot of energy that goes into indoor pools in particular. And rec centers in general as well. There's a lot of people in there who need a lot of ventilation, you know, all times of the day. So that takes a lot of energy. So there is just a lot of load in that building. One thing that we are looking at and we've looked at and kind of set up for future design would be, can we downsize some of these systems? Yes, there is a lot of gas load in the building. Is it too much? Is it actually operating at two thirds of what's installed? Can we actually downsize it when we electrify it? So that we can reduce some of that cost and, and while also helping with decarbonization. So that, I think that addresses the high energy part. And then as far as the efficiency of the building itself, there's some of the energy efficiency and load reduction measures we have included would address that. So we have measures that would recalibrate the building controls. Something that you're, you know, some of those would address exactly what you're talking about, looking at how the, why is the cooling on? Can we install, you know, manual shades or fixed shades or something to shade the window at that time of day?
And we, we have, there are shades and there are automatic shades, but somebody actually has to go and.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, do that. So I'm just, it would be great to, to think about, you know, can we, I mean, can you put, you know, can you put a thing on there where there's heat sensitivity or something and it drops them? I, you know, I, I just, because I'm a regular user and I feel it and I'm very conscious in my own home of opening and closing windows and shades and all of that stuff. It just seems like, you know, I don't know whether that's even significant or not. You know, that's, so.
Yeah, there are, there are measures like that in the load reduction and energy efficiency that would. I'm not sure there's one that addresses that specific window, but we, but you know, a lot of the measures address that, that kind of stuff.
Great, okay, thank you so much.
Just to add one point to the rec center conversation, it is split into two phases, which you may have seen in the staff report. So in phase one of this project, we suggest part of the rec center electrification. This is the older part of the rec center and the part that wasn't new in the late, I think it was 2018, that the new equipment went in. So in phase three of the project, you can see that there's, the rec center shows up again. And that would be when that new equipment would be at the end of its useful life. So again, we aren't recommending taking equipment out before at the end of its useful life, but electrifying the equipment as it.
So that building is over time, just going to get better.
Yep, and, and the thing is too, when it, when we're talking about energy use, half of the equipment in there is nearing its end of life relatively soon. Which is, you know, why we, another reason why we have been focusing on the rec center when it comes to grants and funding opportunities is that we have current CIPs for equipment replacement at the rec center.
Thank you for that clarification. The other thing, Councilor Most, regarding the rec center, when it was being built, the, that city manager and the parks director actually value engineered out some of that, you know, the, I don't know, window filming and whatever, what are awning? And whatever was part of that to reduce the, the sun coming into that building. So then there was some retrofits done, so just so you know that. Councilor Ley, next.
Yeah, I guess I'll join the chorus about just how impressive the materials are. Both in, in detail and the way that all of it is explained. I think it'll be useful for not, not just us, but the community. And, you know, I, I look at this as a terrific framework for comparing different parts of, of what we can do or different steps that we can take to reduce the carbon footprint that we're trying to do. I, I wondered, and I, and I wanted to thank staff, Kayla, you and, and the rest of the staff that worked on this. Just clearly the, the whole piece is a pretty monumental work. And I, I really appreciate that. And the, the fact that it uses a lot of different kind of media, to be honest, I think is really a benefit for people who might not understand things one way, but understand things a different way. And that's important for communicating this to the city. And I also wanted to say thanks for reflecting Councilmember Hamilton's thoughts from previous meeting in the materials that he sent. I, the question that I had was in, you know, we're talking about phasing over time. When there are cost estimates and, and benefit estimates, are those in, in real or nominal dollars?
So the like for like costs are, we use current CIPs that we have right now. And then after 2026, they are estimated replacement costs.
That, that sounds like they're, they're nominal, nominal dollars. In other words, I'm just trying to get a sense of, we, if we're predicting for the future, kind of have to have a sense of how the costs, you know, the spending money today versus spending money in the future is going to work? And are the benefits either larger or smaller as a result of when we do them? That's why I'm asking that question. And I, maybe, I, I guess I'd also be interested in what the, the consultant, how the consultant dealt with that issue.
Yes, I can take a stab at that. I might need a little bit of a clarification on what you're asking. So are you asking, is the cost today going to be more the longer you wait?
Well, when you're, there's, there's a lot of tables concerning costs and, and benefits. And they're very, they're very good. I'm just trying to understand whether when you're phasing it, you're using a value for the dollars in the future that's equivalent, you know, to, to the, the value of those dollars today. So we can kind of get a sense of that we're, we're not, we're not comparing apples and oranges in terms of the amounts that we're, we're looking at in the charts.
Right, so everything in each phase is based on what we know today. It's a, it's a little bit challenging with this type of technology since technology is evolving so quickly on the EV and the heat pump side. You know, we kind of looked at, you know, where was solar 12 years ago? And the cost of solar has gone down tenfold. So it's really hard to project where heat pump technology and costs and where EV technology and costs will be in 10 or 15 years. So we do base that on the information we have available today and today's costs. And the same with the benefits as well. We have the solar benefits and we kind of, we actually just keep them in today's dollars. Since between the escalation and what you potentially would pay on the cost of money would kind of be a wash anyway. So we have very conservative estimates, I would say, for the benefits especially.
Thanks.
Do you have anything else, Councilor Ley? Well, I, I want to thank the sustainability manager and the consultants. You know, the, this is my eighth year on council and we've been talking about this since I've been on council sustainability. And the thing that I always said is it really needs to address the issue and not just do something that makes it look like we're addressing issue. Because we had discussions about buying renewable energy credits and, you know, other, other things that we got, we'd get a sticker that we were, you know, doing good, but, you know, we weren't really reducing greenhouse gases. And so this, this report actually addresses it in a way that, you know, I appreciate the term that was used, the decarb journey. Because it's, it's many years. It's maybe a couple of decades that we go through this. So it is a journey and I, I like the catchphrases of powerable and powered. So I think those are good too. So I really like the, I like the reports. I like the direction it's taking us. You know, quite honestly, the nominal dollars and present value, that discussion bothers me as a finance person. But I, I think that we need to have opportunity to have deeper discussions there to really understand these numbers. Because, you know, as somebody who has a finance background, I want to better, I want to have a better understanding of that. You know, looking at the phases and, and just looking at phase one, so through 2026, it could be as much as $20 million for the next, next three years is what we're saying. That's something that the city would have to find a way to finance. So, you know, as we, I think doing these things are very important. But I think when we get into implementation, it gets a lot more complicated. And if we're going to have to somehow finance this, we'll probably have to go to a, a public vote to do that. Which means we probably have to be in November of 2024 at the earliest. But it's something we would need to be able to figure out the cash flow. Because the cash flow says if we're going to do solar, we're going to have to come up with the money upfront or finance it. Because we don't currently have reserves where we could do that. But it's something that if the numbers make sense, we absolutely want to do it. It's interesting because 10 years ago, I put in solar in my home and a heat pump. And as some of you know, you know, the engineers, it was a generation one heat pump, so I still have a gas furnace, right? So depending on the temperatures, one or the other runs. And I, so I think the hybrid solution makes a lot of sense over time. Because if it gets to be 20 below, a heat pump is really probably not going to heat the rec center unless it's a third or fourth generation. So I really appreciate the reasonable approach that we have here. And it's something that I, I look forward to having discussions about implementation. So, so to me, I would like to further this discussion sometime in the future. Pick a date this year, maybe next month or so forth. We can actually talk about implementation steps. We can talk about if we're going to have to finance things, what are the tools we have available to do that? Because putting in solar, we're going to spend $10 million on solar, we're going to have to find a way to come up with the funds to do that. And, and I look forward to that being a good solution. You know, you and I have had discussions, Kayla, about, does it make sense? Does it really, it's, it's on the supply side rather than the, the use side? But if it makes sense financially, we absolutely want to do it. But we had, need to find a way to come up with capital upfront to be able to do that. And, you know, that's why we're sitting up here and, you know, we deal with all those sort of tough issues. But the other part to me is phasing, which you've laid out very nicely. You know, some of these things like the rec center, yeah, we have the old part and the new parts. And, you know, I appreciate that it's not a, we're going to throw everything out that's five years old. And, you know, and not, not really run to the, the useful, useful years of those things. So I, I'm, I'm thrilled with the reports. I'm thrilled with the direction. And I really hope that we can, we can really have a more of a work session around this. So we can figure out how we move ahead and what we have to do to move ahead. Approving this plan only approves a plan. It doesn't really say how do we put it into action? And I would like to see us have a discussion where we make it actionable. Other discussion? Councilor Heffner.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I, I would echo both your, all of your praise of the plan as well as the concern about bringing this all back to a net present value. For me, that would be really helpful, especially looking at the financial model. I see $24 million in costs in year one, which is almost half of the construction costs. And the benefits spread out across the, the rest of the year. And I think there needs to be a, a sort of bringing all of that up to be real dollars that we can do the kind of apples to apples comparison that you're talking about. I just, it would be helpful, and I, I know, I hear your call for a, a work session later on. But it'd be helpful for me to hear from City Manager Durbin on where are we in terms of the draft budgets? We've been looking at in terms of accounting for some of this? How much money do we have planned and what's the gap?
Thanks. At the moment, we have a million and a half dollar transfer into the capital projects fund in this year. And then next year, 2024, pending year adoption, another million and a half dollars transferred from the general fund into the capital projects fund. That's what we have on the radar at the moment. The rest of the funding isn't there at this point. We wanted to hear how this conversation goes and we have work to do rolling up our sleeves in terms of the grants that we're working on and other opportunities as far as implementation. So we haven't gotten there yet as far as, I don't have $50 million figured out just yet.
Have, have you checked under your couch cushions?
I have Ryder doing that actually right now downstairs in finance. Hopefully Kevin.
So I, I think that's helpful. And I, I would just sort of close by again echoing the mayor's remarks. I think this is a really good and important plan and important progress on sort of laying out how it would look if we move forward with all of this. And I think we have a big challenge in front of us to, to figure out which pieces we're going to do and, and when, and how do you pay for that?
Counselor Dickinson?
Yeah, I think I, I'm, I guess I just want to make sure that I'm understanding, because again, we're talking about like, you know, $51 million. I know there's a bit of joking there, but like, like, you know, coming up with $51 million tomorrow is not the goal. But again, my understanding is a lot of this is in the next three years, we're going to have to replace item X. That's going to cost us $200,000 or $250,000 if we do it the right way. So in the next four years, we're going to spend $50,000 that isn't already budgeted. Because the first 200 is in your budget, right? Like you're expecting to replace that piece of equipment. We're not going to be surprised by, oh my God, we have a $200,000 piece of equipment we need to replace. We know that's coming. The question is, are we willing to spend the extra 50 when we get there to have the right kind of machinery? But again, four years from now, an extra 50, not right now, 250. But so I just, I want to make sure that we're not sounding alarmed that like, we're never going to have to come up with 51 million. But from a cash flow perspective, there will be moments where like, we want to do something and get a grant to match what we did. And we'll have to spend the money first to get a rebate or something. So there will be some moments where the, the outlay really is there before we get some money back. And so from a cash flow perspective, we're going to have some moments. But I guess maybe, and again, you're right that we need to have a bigger, fuller conversation about the budget impacts of all these decisions. But does the plan that is. But does the plan that is being presented tonight concern, like, do you, do you feel we will 100% need to go to the voters for either a tax or a, or a bond in order to execute this? Or is this a matter of timing, pace, whatever, like, oh no, we'll definitely have to do that, it's just how much and what way we do it? No, we may not have to. Where, where do you sit on that?
I don't have an answer for that at the moment. I think the McKinstry team and Kayla's team laid out a good roadmap. There's a lot of good opportunities to leverage our funding. We haven't sat down, you know, with finance to, to work through that. We don't have that in the budget at this point. As I've told you before, I appreciate council and staff and the community's patience as Ryder and I actually worked through really our first budget this year. So we have a lot of lifting to do just in the overall budget. And until you adopt this or consider adoption, we didn't want to get too far ahead of you in terms of plugging in dollars that might not land there. So I don't have that plan. It's something we can work on and I think it would be, I would echo like having at some point in the near future, some kind of a work session, conversation about how we might get there, at least in that first phase maybe, if nothing else.
Just to give you a little bit of perspective on the current process, so Kevin has, our facilities manager, Kevin Frey, has his equipment replacement CIPs. Then there's the municipal electrification CIP. And so we partner those two CIPs together to fund the electrification of the replacements. That's also what we use the electrification CIP for this year when parks applied for the Regional Air Quality Council grant to electrify some of their parks equipment. So they said, we have this much, this is, you know, some additional funding that we'd need to go after this grant money. And so we're able to leverage the municipal electrification CIP that we have to go after and receive that grant. So by budgeting the 1.5 million this year and next year, we've been able to leverage that funding as matching funds for grants and go after larger grant dollars. Right now I have over $6 million that I'm going after in grant funding just this year. And so that is something that I wanted to note. And also through the financing options and through the financial model, they are, the consultants are estimating 1.7 to 2 million dollars per year allocated towards this project. That's after, you know, all of the other, the like-for-like costs and all of that is considered. So it's not too much more than what we are currently allocating for our electrification CIP in '23 and '24.
Were you done?
Yeah.
Okay. Mayor Protem Fady.
Thank you, Mayor. I will start by also echoing all of the praise and thanks for this report. It was wonderful. A lot of excellent information in a very organized manner. I have questions. My comments, I guess, are echoing a lot of what's already been said, that by doing this, we would be setting an example and we would be showing the greater community how they could follow suit and do the same thing in their own buildings and their own homes. I do have questions about the finances. And so my, my request, I guess, would be to find out how much we can get in grants and then determine what our priorities are. Which thing do we want to do first to get the biggest payback quickest? And so I would like to, I guess I support the, the whole carbon, decarbonization plan. I'd just like some more information about timelines and how we're going to get the money and when.
Yes, we certainly would be willing to bring back, you know, more information to the council at a future date about implementation strategies. I think we kind of outlined that in the staff report that we're asking for adoption of the plan. And then we would move into implementation and certainly bring back more information about energy performance contracting. We could bring someone from the Colorado Energy Office here as well if that'd be helpful.
So my, my comments, Counselor Dickinson, were along the lines of what you, what you said. I think we just said it a little bit different way. And as we get into the budget process, well, I think we'll understand so many things a little better. Like the rec center, the old part of the rec center, that's in the CIP to replace that, that HVAC system, which is, which is good. But I don't know how all the pieces fit together, right? I mean, we haven't gotten far enough in the budget process to know what we can afford and we have things that are targeted in the CIP. But where are we going to be November 6th when we vote on the budget? It's just too early to tell. So, you know, to me, that's, we want to do all of these things. What can we do and what might have to be financed is still questions in my mind. Counselor Hamilton.
Thank you. I'll try to keep this brief. There's been a lot of comments up here that already addressed what I was hoping to discuss, including the applause for the work that was done and presented tonight. There was mentioning about renewable energy. There's federal funds available. We need to do it now, sooner rather than later. On page 118, I didn't see a star next to the Inflation Reduction Act. So, and that was something that I think was specifically mentioned as funds to go after for the renewable energy. Do we have an idea of how long those will, will last and be available? And, you know, if discussions were to continue, would we lose that window of time to obtain those sorts of grants?
I'll turn that one over to Ashley. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. That's a really great question. As far as we know, they should go through 2032. However, I'll just disclose with the change of the federal administration, there's always the chance they could go away. So with 2024 coming up, that's just a risk item I think we would like to put out there. The reason that one didn't actually have an asterisk is because it essentially acts as a rebate. You're guaranteed those dollars as of today if you build the system. The way it works is as soon as the system is energized online and connected to the XL grid, you would apply the following January for those direct pay or rebate dollars. And it's 30% back of this total system cost. If you pay with cash, it's a little bit less. It's about 25.5% if you finance the system. And those are guaranteed as long as you build the system as of today. Again, that could change with federal administration change. So that's the only point I'll make there in terms of risk.
Okay, thank you. That's very helpful.
Thank you.
My other comment is I too was, was noticing the, the large range in cost, especially with the grants available and how that could impact the overall cost for the city. I'm open to having additional discussions about how do we ensure we create action behind this plan? That was, you know, asked earlier during public comments to really put some more accountability behind, section two was specifically referenced. I have an eight-year-old daughter. I am thinking that far ahead. I am not thinking about just today and myself. So I would love to have some meat in this that holds us accountable with certain benchmarks and points in time beyond what's in the strategic plan, but possibly written into the ordinance in, in some way. Because it'd be, it's easy to sit up here and vote yes and I feel good, makes a good headline. Everybody says Barbara voted for it. But are we actually going to do something about it? Or are we just going to keep talking the next eight years that it's a good idea? So I'm open to having those discussions. I just wanted to be clear that I think this is really good work and I support it. I support it so much that I want to make sure we can confidently stand behind it and make progress forward for us now and for the kids that aren't in the room right now and don't have that voice. We're the voice for them. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, any more comments? All right, I'm going to propose that we schedule a special session to just talk about this topic, roll up our sleeves, work through some of these questions and we'll want to make sure that the questions that we have get to staff and plenty of times the staff can come prepared so we can discuss them and work on an actionable plan. The, the two, two timeframes I'm looking at is either October 10th or October 24th. Do you have a preference, City Manager?
Yeah, I would recommend October 24th because on October 17th, you have the budget public hearing. I think for the community to hear the bigger picture with the, the overall budget as part of this conversation would probably be appropriate and helpful.
Okay.
So October 24th, I would recommend.
Counselor Most, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I do. I really appreciate what everyone's saying. And I also want to say there's a difference between a strategic roadmap and an implementation plan. And this says right here in section two, "The internal decarbonization plan is intended to serve as a strategic roadmap to guide the city's internal decarbonization efforts, but shall not bind the city in any particular course of action." So I guess my question is, if we're all committed to doing a decarbonization plan, this is asking us to say, we think this is a good strategy. And I think it's important to do that. Strategy is one part of the equation. Tactical implementation is another. And those two things don't need to be integrated. I think that we can say, we can say yes to the community that this is what we want to do and still have that work plan and say, okay, we are, we have made a commitment to this strategic roadmap. And now what we're going to do is we're going to go do the work of sorting out what we think that plan looks like, particularly in keeping with the budget. I guess I just think it's really important not, for the community not to get the feeling that we're just kicking this down the road because from my perspective, and this is work that I do all the time, approving a strategy is different than approving the tactics. And I, I feel like it would be reasonable and appropriate for us to make this commitment tonight to the strategic roadmap. And then, as you said, Mayor, to have a work session and say, okay, we have made a commitment to this strategic roadmap. What do we think we can actually get done and what timeframe? How much is it going to cost and how is that going to fit with the budget? To me, I think we can do both and. I don't think this is an either or from my perspective. So I just want people to kind of just consider that a little bit.
Yeah, I, I don't have a major disagreement with you other than I think it's important that we understand this. And there are, there's been questions raised about the financial models. There's questions in my mind about how we, how we do this with a cash flow and we will have to make policy decisions around that. And if, if it requires us to take something to the voters, that's, that's an issue. I think there's enough questions that we want to get this right. And I, I believe they're more connected than I think you do.
Yeah, because, yeah.
Right? And so, you know, I think we're agreeing to disagree, but I think we are both supportive of this. I'm, what I was proposing is, you know, I want to get this done. I want to sit, sit with staff and sit with the consultants and whoever else, with the finance director probably, and come up with a strategy to make sure this, this is something that's going to be financially doable. Because I look at doing the solar as, you know, I'm looking at the decarbonization roadmap that says nine to 10 million dollars. We don't have nine to 10 million dollars to invest on, on the upfront to get 30 or 40 years of benefit, which are part of the calculations, you know, that are, that are in here, you know, over, over time. So I want this to be doable and, you know, I want us to come up with the way that it is doable. And so that's, that's why I'm linking them more together. But we're not kicking it down the road if we say we're scheduling a special session where we can make decisions, where we can approve a plan and approve an implementation strategy. So that's where I'm coming from.
And I, I hear you and I, you know, have a lot of respect for your perspective. I just contextualize this because I do this work all the time with major corporations. And strategic, accepting a strategic plan and agreeing on a strategic roadmap and doing the work that you're talking about doing from, from my perspective and my experience in the business world, is that those are two different, those are really two different things and that, that this is the vision, right? This is the vision. This is, this is where we want to go. And then it's like, okay, great, we agree with that. And then what, what can we actually do? And so for me, those are, again, that's just my perspective. Those are two different problems to solve. And so, yeah, that's just the way that I approach it.
Counselor Dickinson.
You're recording this, right? I agree with Maxine. Yeah, right? I, actually, I think I agree with both of you and I think what I, what I hear from Maxine is, I actually don't, like, I was a little surprised by, not really your motion, but your suggestion. So I'm like, oh, well, we're going to pass the strategic plan tonight and we got a lot of work to do on how we implement this. And to the, you know, Mr. Calley's complaint, what we pass tonight does not tie our hands at all. It actually is kind of unfortunately just a promise. And then the work we have to do is to implement the strategy that we're saying, yeah, we want to, we definitely want to go down this road. I think we're probably 7-0 in wanting to go down this road of decarbonization. But the how and how fast and exactly how it's going to work, that's going to be a struggle. And I, and I hope that we can fulfill our promises that we make tonight and do it efficiently and effectively. But I was expecting, so I just think I agree, I was expecting us to, to pass this strategic vision, as you put it. And then, and then I think it's really important that we have a, a meeting soon to talk about implementation strategies and pace and funding mechanisms and all those things. So I would support a vote tonight to, to push this plan forward. If that fails, of course, I'm excited for the next meeting to push it forward at that point.
I, I, I'm, I struggle with having a vote that sends a negative message. A negative message. If, if, if I don't want to support approving it tonight, I don't want to vote no, right? I want to vote yes. And I, I, you know, one, one of the things that's in the resolution, it says, you know, and one of the, you know, speakers spoke to it about shall not bind the city. Well, I mean, that was because of appropriation. We can't approve a, a plan like this or, you know, that's going to say that somehow we're binding our appropriation responsibility before we know what it is. And so I don't want to vote no on a motion. I want to vote yes on a motion when we, when we have more idea of the finances, more idea of the implementation and the cash flow, to me, is a huge issue. You know, there's pieces like the, the equivalent in the, in the rec center, yeah, that's part of our CIP. But the solar, $10 million for solar is not. And how would we finance it? So I, I don't, I don't want us to come into conflict about timing on something we agree on. So that's my perspective. Counselor Most.
I, I'd like to hear from some of the other council members. I'd be really curious to see what people's perspective is.
Counselor Hamilton.
So financing is part of this strategic plan. The strategic plan that is laid before us includes not only suggestions and guidance on how to achieve our goals, but it had suggestions about how to achieve those goals through financing. So to me, the strategy includes both the strategy reduce and the strategy to fund it. Like I said earlier, I want to make sure for my daughter and her friends and future generations that something's going to get done and we're not going to just keep talking about it. And the financial strategy in here, although hopeful, there's some wide ranges that lead me to question, is it doable with what we have and the resources we have? So I, I would be open to discussing that more because I don't want to vote for a headline. I want to vote to make change and actually do something. And if that means we have to take a few months to talk about it to ensure that we spend the years actually doing it, I am open to that. So to me, financial strategy is not separate from the strategy of how to reduce the greenhouse gases. They're tied together. And I want to be very clear that I support and I think this work is very important, so much so, I want to do it right and I want to hold ourselves accountable to that.
Thank you. Counselor. Counselor Hefner.
I'll just say, I agree. And I think for me, the main issue is just the near term. There's a lot of near term capital outlays that are significant and we need to grapple with that as we're having our ongoing discussions about the budget. It's not really, to me, a meaningful strategic plan if it calls for millions and millions of dollars in near term spending that we don't really have a vision for. And I don't think we have to have it completely ironed out, but I do think we have to have some sort of realistic vision about what we're committing to.
Mayor Protem Fahey and then Counselor Lay.
Yeah, I agree with what's just been said. I really support the whole idea of having the decarbonization plan, but I think there has to be a lot more financial discussion about how much we can do, how soon we can do it, what's the order and what will the payback be? And I don't want to, you know, bankrupt the city in order to do something that in the long run won't be that helpful for us.
Counselor Lay.
Yeah. I guess to that last point, I'm not sure we have the option to bankrupt the city. We have to work within our budget. I thought that the comments that Councilmember Hamilton made or Counselor Hefner are, you know, certainly give me a lot to think about. I think that, I agree with them. I think there is something, and I understand the intuitive idea that, gee, if we don't accept something in full, then somehow we're hedging our bets. Well, I don't believe that. I think if you don't raise some of these questions now, you are potentially grabbing a headline, but you're not going to be able to fulfill the goals that you aim to be supporting. So I think it is worth having solid financial discussion and to do what is the hard work, which is figuring out how much we can do at any given time, how we're going to pay for it, whether we're going to try some phasing, you know, how we're going to do the phasing and how we're going to balance some of the other priorities that we have, which is just what we do generally. But I think the good news for those maybe who might be impatient with that kind of thing is that we're planning to have a discussion about this sooner rather than later. And I think that's, you know, doing this stepwise actually is, I think, a better way to actually doing something that is sustainable, achievable, measurable than, you know, doing something that in some ways we're not, you know, is beyond the scope of what Kayla and our terrific consultants were asked to do. These are the hard decisions that are in our lap. And I think it is good to not take forever, just simply to make sure we have a good handle on this before we, you know, we treat it as something that we're going to do exactly as it appears on paper. Paper and practice are always a little different, but it's going to be a great discussion simply because we've got a great framework to work from. Or, you know, the stuff that we have to do, I think, will be, hopefully will be doable by our finance department. I don't know whether it would be useful to ask the finance committee to look at this separately, but that's, I think, maybe, I'm not, I don't have a strong feeling about that now or not. I think it's something all of us, you know, care about it, maybe a committee of the whole for that purpose. But, you know, I support it to that extent. I don't, I think that it's, you know, it's a terrific strategic plan. I think that the implementation is still something we need to work on. So I, and I think that's the consensus that seems to be developing, you know, among council. Not everybody seems to agree with that necessarily, but it sounds like there's a, you know, there's a rough consensus starting to build up. That would be my observation.
Thank you, Counselor Lay. Mayor Protem Fahey, and then I'm going to wrap up the discussion.
I would just like to propose that I second your proposal, Mayor, to extend this to October 24th for a study session to go into more detail and depth on the financial implications.
All right. Do we need to have a formal vote on this? All right. So I'm going to wrap this up. I think the message to staff and the consultants is you've done a terrific job. And the fact that we want to meet again and talk about this, I think is really important. You know, voting on this would have been an easy thing to do. What we're saying is, we want to spend another, I know, we're encumbering you two as well, but we want to dig deeper because we think this is important and we want to find a way to make it happen. And, you know, I think that's a commitment that all of us would nod our head here. So, and I think that the same message is to the citizens of Louisville, we're taking this seriously. This is something we want to do. So we're going to meet on, we're going to have a special meeting on October the 24th, which gives us the opportunity to vote on the resolution and work on some implementation issues. And I wasn't sure where this was going to go either, tell you about Counselor Dickinson, but I think the comments and the energy around this, I think, are really important. And I look forward to more discussion. So with that, we will move on to the next agenda item, which is ordinance number 1855, series 2023, and ordinance amending chapter 5.08 of the Louisville Municipal Code concerning art gallery permits. And this is the second reading. Our city clerk will step in for a presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, Jenny Klein, Deputy City Clerk and Secretary to the Local Licensing Authority. Earlier this year, the Colorado General Assembly passed House Bill 231061 that amended Colorado state statute to allow a retail establishment to serve complimentary alcoholic beverages for consumption on their premise up to 24 times a year. Previously, this permit was only available to art galleries. The ordinance before you this evening amends the municipal code to allow this new permit type. There are some constraints on this permit as outlined in your council communication and on the draft application. The local licensing authority reviewed this change at their July 24th meeting and expressed no concerns regarding this new permit type.
Thank you. I think we'll go straight to public comment. Public has left. Anybody on Zoom wish to make comments? Seeing no hands. Council questions, discussions?
I have some questions.
Counselor Hamilton.
So as I was reading through this, two questions popped in my head. One is, so there's a bullet point that says that the establishment does not educate students from K to 12 or provide childcare. Recently, there is an update regarding universal preschool in Colorado. Is preschool fall under childcare or would the K through 12 have to change because it's now being offered at K through 12 schools? Or does it not matter?
I believe that it would fall under childcare because it's, there's some debate on the early childhood education. You know, it's a nice thing to have, but it's not fully funded by the state and it's not required, so to speak. So.
I would. That works for me.
Okay.
My other question is, we have some really phenomenal businesses that I frequent that have inherent risks associated with them, like rock climbing. Is that something where that would be a risk that that business takes or should certain risks be outlined in what we're discussing tonight?
It's absolutely a risk that the business would take. So the, for the rock climbing, just to let you know, about once a year, sometimes a little bit more, they hold a special event where they partner with a boulder climbing nonprofit. And they are really cognizant of their risks, so much so that if you have one beer at this event, you can't climb.
Yeah, okay.
So you get a wristband to go in. Once you get a drink, that wristband comes off. You get a stamp. Once you have that stamp, you can't climb. So I think they know the inherent risk of doing this.
Okay, thank you. That's perfect. I'm good.
Anyone else? All right, we'll go back to, did you have a comment, Counselor Dickinson?
My only one is that I think rather than 24 times a year, I would recommend 52 times a year, like once a week. I know there are a lot of businesses that do like, oh, Friday night, you can come by my store and we have wine. So like, oh, but you can only do that every other week. It's just kind of, I don't know where the 24 comes from, but again, if I'm going to serve free mimosas at my, you know, clothing shop on Sundays, oh, sorry, I can only do, you know, first and third, like I just, I think a weekly, being able to do something weekly seems like something they might do either way and get away with 24 of them and cheat on the other 30, 28. So I would just suggest that we allow it to be at most weekly. So that'd be 52 times a year. That would be a suggestion I have for amendment.
I don't know if we can do that because the 24 was written into state statute. I don't know.
Seeing a big nod.
So take it back.
Still want it.
You can do it at your house, Caleb.
All right. Any other council comments before we go back to public? Okay, we're going back to public comment. All right, seeing none. Back to council, closed public hearing. Anybody like to make a motion?
I make a motion. Do I have to read the resolution though, don't I? Oh, God, I lost it. Someone is going to have to do it. I lost it.
Are you still looking for it?
I can do it, Maxine. I move that we pass ordinance number 1855, series 2023, and ordinance amending chapter 5.08 of the Louisville Municipal Code concerning art gallery permits on second reading.
I second it.
Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Hamilton.
Yes.
Hoffner.
Yes.
Dickinson.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Fahey.
Yes.
Most.
Yes.
Mayor Maloney.
Yes. Did we get Counselor Lay?
No, but the answer is yes.
Thank you. Sorry.
All right. Thank you, everybody. We'll go to the city attorney's report.
Thank you, Mayor. I have no report this evening.
Thank you. So next is council comments, committee reports, and identification of future agenda items. And speaking with the city manager today, we were having discussions about potentially moving the budget discussion, which is scheduled for next Tuesday. We explored the 29th, that may not work, so we're considering now the September 12th, which is currently an open date. Is that good with everybody? Are you looking at the ceiling again, Counselor Dickinson? Okay.
And that should include the work plan also.
Right. So the work plan and the budget, which we are folding together. All right. So we're going to, we will, go ahead, Counselor Most.
I just have another thing I want to bring up.
Okay. So we will be canceling the meeting next Tuesday. And so the meeting on Tuesday, September 12th, will be the budget slash work plan meeting. Okay?
So we're not having a meeting on the 22nd or the 29th?
Correct.
Okay. And now I have something else.
And Counselor Most.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask that the staff take a look at what Lafayette just passed in their community on their new building codes and take a look at what that looks like versus what we have. Because I know when we had this discussion about building codes, one of the questions we all had was, well, what are our neighbors doing? And Lafayette just passed a pretty aggressive, some pretty aggressive building codes. And I mean, in the long run, ideally, here I go to my technology again. I would love to have a dashboard where we could look at what we're doing versus our neighboring communities and kind of compare and contrast. But in the short term, I'd love to kind of see where we are versus Lafayette.
I just, editorial comment before the city manager weighs in. The article was actually incorrect on a number of things.
So there you go.
For example, gas lines. They do allow gas lines for things like generators and restaurants. And so there were a number of exceptions. And the other thing to remember is they were under the 2015 code,
Right.
which was several generations behind where we've been for the last several years. City manager?
Yeah, and I think if I understand you right, excuse me, it's not just Lafayette, but where do we compare to with the other communities in the region on our energy codes and building codes? Is that right?
Kayla had presented something like that previously, I believe, as part of the presentation. So maybe she can update that and provide it to us. That would, I think, be useful.
I think probably, if you don't mind me making a suggestion, at the level of, you know, the 21 code, 19 code, and if there's anything major that they've added or subtracted from that, something along those lines. Because I don't think we want a sentence by sentence.
Yeah, I mean, a table would be great.
That's easy.
Yeah.
Okay. Counselor Dickinson.
Do you want this on a council agenda or just an email?
I think an email would be fine. I think it's just an informational item. Counselor Dickinson and then Mayor Protem Fahey.
Yeah, I don't know, sort of similar, whether this needs to be on a future agenda or just communication from staff to council. I'm just interested in learning more about what communities, what we already have in place and what other communities have in place and are putting in place around e-bike safety for children. You know, new policies or other policies around speed control, types of, you know, e-bikes allowed on different surfaces, you know, what's allowed on the sidewalk, what's allowed on the street, what are the helmet rules, what are the speed rules, what are the ticketing, what's the enforcement? Just kind of understanding where the current world sits and what is currently enforceable and not enforceable and what other people are maybe doing. And not to say that we're necessarily going to take that on as new policy, but just at least understanding what is the current rule and what are we able to currently enforce. So maybe just in email or part of the communication, just as an understanding.
Yeah. And then we can decide if it's something we want to take on as an agenda item. Did you have a question?
Just a comment. We did today start an educational campaign where we're pushing out information about e-bike safety to coordinate that with school starting. So our communications team has, I think it's three different communications they're working on over the next couple of weeks to really push that out. Then we want to coordinate with the schools on that as well.
Excellent. Thank you for that information and taking that on. Mayor Protem Fahey.
Thank you. Yes, I have two things that I wanted to comment on. I've gotten a lot of comments lately from residents about traffic issues in the city. The biggest issue, I guess, is with the Polk and Dahlia speeding and the accidents that have happened there with people not stopping or looking after they've stopped. There's also been comments about people making a right turn on red at the, be the Via Appia intersection as it hits South Boulder Road. We did trim the branch that was kind of hiding that sign, which I think might help, but there are still a lot of people who turn right on red there. So that's another traffic issue that was brought up. Also, we trimmed the tree that was hiding the stop sign on South Street and Main. So that was also good. So the other thing, so it's some kind of discussion about how we can, I don't know, make it safe. make it safer for traffic issues, expanding on the the Polk and Dahlia conversation.
Yeah, we, we, we do have some communication going out. It may have already gone out to that neighborhood about we're fast-tracking these improvements. Here's what the improvements are, the speed humps and so forth.
Right.
Excuse me. And then we also have a meeting scheduled with fireside principal and leadership to update them as well. And hopefully, they can help with the kids and the families in terms of how to use crosswalks safely, safely and these type of things. And Chief, I don't know if you want to talk about your focus areas as far as some of these intersections?
Yes, thank you. So, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Do you mind deferring to Counselor Most?
I will defer. No problem.
I just wanted to, to add to it, Council, Mayor Pro Tem Fahy said, because I heard something that, like, literally scared me from someone about traffic, that people are coming up South Boulder Road and turning left, the intersection of McCaslin and South Boulder Road, they're turning left into that neighborhood without stopping, that people are running that red light. So that scares me, too. So if you can.
Thank you, Chief.
Yeah, thank you. So one of the, one of the priorities is obviously traffic safety and community safety. The police department, we're creating what we're referring to as focused traffic safety zones, in which those are going to be areas where we're going to be focusing enforcement, educational opportunities, and increasing contacts and visibility there. So currently, our, for August of this, of this year, Polk and Dahlia corridor between Cherry and Pine Street, Centennial Drive between South Boulder Road and Sunland for speeding violations, Via Appia northbound at South Boulder Road for the no turn on red violations, eastbound South Boulder Road at McCaslin for red light violations, and Bella Vista and Roosevelt for stop sign violations. So those, those are all currently areas that we're, we're going to be focusing our efforts and trying to, again, use enforcement and education to try to reduce the, you know, the, the instances that that were getting reported to us.
Thank you for being here, Chief.
On top of it, Chief.
Yeah, thank you for being here and providing that information to us.
And the other issue that, oh, what?
Just a minute. Counselor Lay has had his hand up for a while and then.
Oh, I had my second question.
Oh, we've been, we interrupted you. Sorry, Counselor Lay, you have to wait just a little bit longer.
Sorry. My second question is, especially after the, the fire in Hawaii, Maui, there is a lot of conversation about how to prevent that from happening again. In their case, it was a lot of dry brush and high winds again, just like the Marshall Fire. And I would like to see what we can do to prevent this from happening again. In California, they have told the Excel, or not Excel, they have a Pacific Power, they told the power company that they had to underground the lines, all of the lines, and if they didn't, that they would have to turn the power off during those fire conditions, the high wind, dry conditions. It only took about two years before all of the power lines in the city that my daughter lives in, in Southern California, to be all undergrounded. I've also heard that currently Superior is having all of their power lines undergrounded by Excel. And I would like to see what we can do. The reason that California was successful, I was told, was because the power company lost so much income when they had to shut the power down and got so many complaints from the residents that they had no power, that they decided to underground the lines. I would like to see something like that happening here also, if we can.
A lot of that would require PUC action. California has some regulations that are far more stringent than ours as far as demands and and when they need to turn their power off. I think that those conversations are happening here in Colorado, but that's not a Louisville thing, that's a PUC thing. As far as Superior goes, it's my understanding that they're undergrounding some of their power lines in, I believe it's, like, downtown. And we do the same thing on an annual basis. We, we have some, some funding through our franchise agreement where we underground as much as we can afford in certain areas. I'd have to check with my team as far as what might be on the books for this year. And, you know, if that, if that lawsuit that the residents have against Excel goes forward, that, that may well change a lot of things in Colorado as well, if they're proven negligent or whatnot in terms of the, the power lines there. So I think we have some, some waiting to see what happens there. We are, our resilience, our recovery and resilience manager started yesterday, Kiana. So you'll get to meet her soon. She's got, Chief took her on a tour of emergency management, sheriff's office and so forth yesterday, so we're working on bringing her up to speed. But a lot of her work is going to be on community education, organizational preparedness. And as we get a mitigation person onboard, then we're hoping that that person can really start working on incentive, education and incentive programs for all the private property hardening. There's a lot of work to be done there. And it's definitely on our radar and it's definitely something that's important to us. And I know, I'll just speak to what the, the mayor said earlier, we've reached out to Maui. This is very re-triggering for what's, for what we went through here in Louisville. And I hope everybody takes care of themselves and their friends and their families here because this is really close to home.
All right. One, one last thing? Oh, Chris. I thought you were raising your hand. Chris, please.
I am raising my hand, but Chris was next.
Counsel, Counselor Lay.
I can defer. I'm glad to defer to Counsel member Most.
So one of the things, and this just was raised with Mayor Pro Tem Fahy, I would like to actually put this on, and maybe it's going to be a work plan thing for next year, but we still allow open fires in people's backyards. And I woke up two weeks ago, or not woke up, I was just about to get ready, ready to go to bed, and my whole house smelled like smoke. And I started freaking out and I thought my house was on fire. And then I ran outside and somebody four doors down from me had a fire in their backyard and the smoke was 35 to 40 feet in the air. And I know that we have rules in this town that allow people to do that, but given Mayor Pro Tem Fahy's comments, I would like to know why in a community where we just had a horrible, horrible fire, and this is in a neighborhood, by the way, where I live, where the fences are all 45 years old. I, I shudder to think if a spark got onto one of those fence lines. So I think it's something that we need to take up. And again, maybe it's a work plan thing for next year, but you, you reminded me of this because it was, it was really traumatizing just for me and my house wasn't really impacted by the fire. So it's something I'd like us to think about. Maybe it's, again, work plan or future item. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Lay, bring us home.
Yeah, I'm glad that Counsel member Most made those comments because they're, I'm just building on it. I know that all of us watched what happened in Maui with, with great interest and heartbreak and many have been very re-traumatized by that. I, one of the things I know, and I'm not sure she would necessarily want me to do this, but I'm going to say it anyway, that I know Reina Pomeroy, who works very hard on Marshall Together, was at her, I think she was helping her parents during that period when the fire happened and not, not on Maui, I think she was on Maine Island, but, and worked to help them set up a Slack channel and that kind of thing. And I know that there are people in Louisville that are really willing and interested in helping and, you know, maybe one suggestion might be if there's, if anybody can put something on our website that might suggest how people can help, that's a good thing, I think, on our fireside. It's good to be in solidarity with people who are just crushed by this and with the loss of life, so much worse than anything we could really imagine. But I also want to emphasize what I just echo what Counsel member, excuse me, Fahy had, had said. I, I think it would, and we can talk a bit more about this, it's follow-ups to our work plan, but we really need to be focusing more, in my view, on fire hardening and resilience because we've, I went to a, a series of events recently for the group after the fire, which helps people and communities like ours that have been through major wildfires. And it's, there's, there's certainly a lot of data to suggest that although we're not necessarily going to have exactly the kind of event we've had before, that the chances of something more similar than not happening again in a lot of communities, including potentially ours, is significant. We've got a lot of people who are really taking big risks to the back. We have people who, you know, but for the change of the wind, and I include myself in that, about 300 yards away from one of the, the fingers of our fire, Marshall Fire, we really owe it to ourselves and them and the future to, as a matter of, you know, good climate change action, as a matter of good stewardship of our own resources and protecting and supporting the health and welfare of people we have here in Louisville. I think we owe it to them to consider that carefully as we make decisions about where to spend their time in the future. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Lay. And with that, we're adjourned.